If we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Call this meeting in order at 7:03 PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Von Kruks.
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Kamawattan.
Present.
Hornbeck.
Here.
Prueji.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Brzeppa.
Here.
Coram present, Mayor Brzeppa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item we have is the minute approval of the September 3rd, 2024 regular meeting.
So moved.
We've got motion and support. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. All right, we've got presentations and proclamations here. First up, we have from our City Beautiful Commission, our annual Home and Business Award Program. If we could get a motion to make this part of the regular meeting. All right, moved and supported. Any further discussion? Great, if we could bring up our civic commissioners here. We've got Cindy and Bob to do these presentations with us. Do you guys want to say something first?
I do. Good evening. First of all, the City Beautiful Commission would like to thank the mayor and the city council for a few minutes this evening to present our 2024 City Beautiful Awards. In 1957, a few ladies got together and planted and took care of a few flowers around Trenton, thus starting the City Beautiful Commission. So fast forward to 2024, with all of the stunning hanging baskets and ground pots along West Jefferson, to the beautiful ground pots along West Road. We could not do what we do as a commission without the support from our DPW. Russ and his crew make sure that our flowers are watered, they are put up in the spring, taken down in the fall time, and then we switch everything up. Everything goes back to the growers and we start our next season. So if you see them out cutting grass, or trimming a tree, or watering, please just stop, beep, wave, tell them thank you. I know they would really appreciate it because we do. This evening, we have a downtown business to award tonight. We also have a really wonderful treasure here in the city of Trenton, which is our honorable mention, along with a handful of other homeowners that take pride and joy into making their front yards beautiful. Together, DPW, the City Commission, the City Beautiful Commission, and the homeowners and businesses of Trenton, together, we make Trenton a beautiful place to live, work, and visit. With that being said, I'm going to pass the mic over to our phenomenal mayor and we'll get these awards presented. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you very much, Cindy. So first, we have here Freckles and Grit. We want to make sure that everyone, even, there's going to be a few that we don't have here in person. We're going to make sure everyone gets their recognition. So Christina, congratulations and thank you very much. All right, next we have the McLeod family. Congratulations. Oh, thank you. Easy with the microphone. We've got the Affholter family up next here. Next, we have, and they're not here, the Shell family. Want to give them their recognition as well. Make sure that they get that and their sign. We have. Give it a second to catch. We have the Reno family, also unavailable here, but we'll make sure that they get their sign and certificate as well. Next, we have the Sanderland family, also unable to attend here. Open up well, Debbie. Thank you. I probably went too fast at the start. And last, but certainly not least, we have the Ferris family. Unable to attend. Oh, I'm sorry. We had two left. The Queen family. Appreciate it very much. We have. Waiting for it to, oh, no, no, I got it. We have the Origanello family. Congratulations. Thank you.
Of course.
We have. Drumroll. The Anderson family. Congratulations and thank you. Oh, wonderful. And we have an honorable mention here awarded to the Cultural Center. And with that, we have to certainly give that same thank you to our DPW, but also our garden club that does so much work there as well, too. Has definitely earned it. We appreciate you very much. Keeps it beautiful all year round and does so much to help so many families around the area, too. So we appreciate that immensely. So I know, I want to say on behalf of everyone on council here, thank you all so much. What often seems like it might be small things at home to you do so much to, well, I think you all know, are often massive undertakings that take a lot of maintenance and time and care. But they do so much that really just enhances all of our neighborhoods and makes Trenton such a beautiful place. So thank you all very much on our behalf. And we won't make you stay, but I do think that before you do go, I think everyone on council will want to shake your hands, too, to say thank you. So thank you all again from all of us. We appreciate you guys. Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate you. So if you want to run through the gauntlet now. Oh, no, you're good. Congratulations again. Yes, congratulations again. Of course. Congratulations again. Congratulations again. Yep, thank you, guys. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much. No, congratulations. Best right off the vine, right?
They used to drop them off in the towers, my mom would look forward to them.
That's because you all make it that way.
Yeah, they used to bring them to the towers and my mom would never eat the whole thing. So she'd be like, hey,
I love a fresh tomato. Alrighty. Next item we have on the agenda, we have a proclamation here for Forging Manufacturing Day. If I could get a motion to make this part of the regular minutes, and I'll read this into the record here. Do we have a second on that?
Yeah.
Thank you, okay. All right, whereas North America's forging industry has been identified by the United States Department of Defense as part of America's critical supply chain, and whereas Michigan is home to one of the largest forging manufacturing workforces, and the third largest in the United States, and the city of Trenton is near three forging companies within a 30-minute drive specializing in the manufacturing of a wide range of products, including automotive, aerospace, defense, oil and gas exploration, power generation, wind energy, mining, rail tolls. And whereas, over the past five years, forging jobs have increased by more than 5% at Trenton Forging Company, adding new jobs within the city of Trenton. And Trenton Forging Company's average employee wage is $81,600, which makes forging one of the highest-paid sectors in Wayne County, Michigan. Whereas forging companies in partnership with the Forging Industry Association support educational institutions, including Wayne State University, pre-K to 12 school districts, technical schools, community colleges, public and private universities, along with many other educational institutions, nonprofits, and charities in Wayne County, Michigan. And whereas, FIA's Forging Education Foundation funds summer manufacturing camps, children's forging books, e-learning industry-relevant research to advance the science of forging, and engages students through curriculum, experiential learning, and scholarships to pursue careers in the forging supply chain. And whereas, Wayne State University, Monroe Community College, along with many other educational institutions, offer and plan to offer state-of-the-art instruction and high-demand careers supporting the workforce needs of forging employers in the region. And whereas, Trenton Forging Company, located in the city of Trenton, has invested more than $15.5 million in capital investments over the past decade. And whereas, Trenton Forging Company's forging jobs generate direct wages of over $7.18 million annually and spends over $2.5 million with contractors supporting the creation of downstream jobs and economic growth within the city of Trenton. And whereas, as part of Forging Manufacturers' Day, the second Friday of October, thousands of educational leaders, teachers, counselors, students, and workforce partners will visit forging companies to increase awareness and learn about career opportunities that are directly linked to science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. And now therefore, I, Stephen Brzeppa, mayor of the city of Trenton, by virtue of the power vested in me under the charter of the city, do hereby proclaim October 11th, 2024, Forging Manufacturing Day. Should have got a glass of water for that. But very excited for that. Thank you for the support on that. And just a quick note that I find very cool about it, while not necessarily rooting for Matt Stafford as much anymore, but when they do show the Rams on TV, much of their stadium, SoFi Stadium, was actually created at Trenton Forging. So nice fun fact when you see that on Fox and CBS on football games. Okay, next up, we have here is public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment, we have reserved exclusively for items on today's agenda. We'll have another opportunity for all of the comment at the close of the meeting. That's it. Anyone wishing to speak, please, directs all their questions to me, begins with their name and address, and please limits their comments to five minutes. Not seeing any on Zoom. All right, we'll move on along here. Next up, we have under appointments. I'm asking for this body's approval of my appointment of Chelsea Detloff to the City Beautiful Commission, Mark Nestor to the Downtown Development Authority for terms expiring October 1st, 2027.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti.
Yes.
Kamawattan.
Yes.
Hornbeck.
Yes.
Prueji.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Brzeppa.
Obstein.
Von Kruks.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Brzeppa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you all for your concurrence. All right, next up, we have our 33rd District Court fines, costs, and fees from August 2024. And I will defer to our court delegate, Councilwoman Von Kruks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to receive and place on file the cost recovery amount in the amount of $964.77 due to the city of Trenton.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, next up here under general, we have Kayden Gloss. Okay, I assumed you were Kayden there. If you wanted to head up there, we've got Kayden Gloss's request for door-to-door residential address painting. Kayden's here with us tonight, and I know some of, some council Kayden's here with us tonight, and I know some of, some council members had questions. So if we could first get a motion to remove this item from the table.
So moved. Support.
All right, moved and supported to remove the item from the table. And then Kayden, if you wanted to head up to the podium by chance, if you just wanted to give kind of a brief overview of what it is that you plan to do, and I know, like I mentioned, some council members had questions, and so we'll just give them a chance to ask it and go from there.
So I guess the main plan would just be to go door-to-door around Trenton and then ask residents if they wanted their address painted on the curb, like out front. I know I door dash a little bit, and I know it helps a lot to be able to see the addresses out in front. It helps a lot with also, like, emergency responders and things like that. So I figured it'd be a good, good way to make an extra, extra buck and then also make the city look a little bit better. Because I've also seen a couple cities around that do it, and I think it looks pretty good on the out front, so. I guess, and mostly it would be just like on weekends, early mornings, like anywhere from, you know, 10 to midday would be, when I would be going door-to-door, asking residents.
Okay, gotcha. And I know that that was a question, I can't recall who had asked it, but hours, we're trying to get that figured out, because normally we don't have, make sure that I think it's no earlier than nine and no later than sunset for those types of things, so just making sure those hours were there. But I'll open up to council now, I know folks had questions or anything like that. Councilman Prueji?
This might be towards Mr. Creach and yourself, Mayor. I'm assuming he's going to have proper badging when he's going door-to-door, so the people know that he's just not some crackpot going door-to-door?
I don't know what the, I think Madam Clerk maybe knows what the actual, like, permit or peddler's license may look like, or if this falls under that specifically, I can't recall.
Right, well, normally if we were to, we've never issued a license for something like this. We've had a group come in and do it before, but it's been many, many years since I've seen anybody do curb painting. But in the past, I know we have had, I want to say, like, maybe a group from, like, maybe a sports team do it before with the schools. So it's been many, many years since we've had any curb painting that I'm aware of in the city of Trenton. As far as a peddler's permit, a peddler's permit, we can issue a license, they go through a background check.
Oh, yeah.
We'd have them bring in a picture, we would give him a license with his picture on it, and then if he were going door-to-door, if you wanted to go that route, we could do that. That peddler permit is $100, and it's good for three months. It would be up to you if you wanted to have him go that route to do this. This was more of, yeah, we've never had this request before as far as, because it's not nonprofit, I mean, he is doing it for a profit. So it would be up to your body.
I clearly like the concept, but I'm just trying to protect the two entities, himself and the city. And that way, any resident, you know, doesn't get alarmed, and then, hey, here we go. And that's all I'm looking for. I'm not trying to make the young gentleman spend extra money, but those are the two criteria which I was concerned about. And the other thing is, do he, does he have to be insured or bonded? I mean, if he's working on a curb and he gets clipped by a car, who's going to be on the hook? Are we, is the city going to be on the hook for that? How does that play out?
I'd probably have to defer to our attorney here.
I should give you a written opinion and response to this, honestly. I'm really worried about it. I want to give you, I'm not opposed to it, it's probably your, I mean, the thing is, are you giving him specific credence that we look like we're a sponsor for him? That's what I'm worried about. What is, what precisely does he really want? May I ask, what do you want precisely? You want us to approve it? I mean.
I mean, yeah, well, like, when I originally had the idea, I just, like, looked it up and I saw that, like, the curbs aren't like residents, like, it's not their property, it's technically property of the city. So I figured I would just ask you guys if it were okay to do that, like, do that on the curbs, I guess.
I, I support the idea as long as all the protections are in place. I think it's great. The young man is obviously trying to do something to improve the city, hardworking, trying to, you know, make an earnest income. I have no beef, other than those two criteria, so.
Were you worried that we would ticket you, the city would ticket you, or something like that?
Ah, yeah, I mean, I guess if, you know, a cop drove by and saw me just spray painting a curb, I guess.
Yeah.
Wanted to be able to prove that, you know, I had some kind of approval.
Indemnify waiver or whatever, since he's on the public road, right? Let us figure out, we're going to try to figure out how to get indemnification on this.
Okay.
I don't, we just, I think the city should not formally approve this, but we should set up, we're going to have to prepare an ordinance that allows people to do this with the full indemnification, full understanding. You, you, makes sense, you know what I'm saying? What do you want to do then?
I wish you wouldn't have asked.
That's why I asked.
Did you have another question, just to, because we could, but those are, those are good questions, yeah.
Have they done this in other cities?
Sure.
What do the other cities do?
I don't think they make you do anything. They don't do anything. They show up on the, they show up on your doorstep, they knock on your door and go, hey, can I paint your address for 25 bucks? You let them paint and they move on.
He's worried, I think he's worried that some of the science.
He's actually doing it right. He's asking.
Yeah. And we're giving him a hard time.
Do they ticket guys in the other cities? What do they do?
No.
In order to go door-to-door, the reason why he's coming, the reason why he's.
Wants to make sure that we don't call the police on him, is basically it, yeah.
He's coming to us because he wants to go door-to-door to solicit to.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure, if, yeah, it's a date, and then it'll go to Scott, and then I think Timber says the other, I do.
I don't have a problem with the, prove a contention upon us.
An indemnification or waiver, yeah.
Indemnification.
Okay.
As long as we're, I don't think anybody cares about the markings on the curb.
Do you have any insurance, just out of interest?
Like, yeah, I have health insurance, yeah.
I mean, do you have, like, any, you don't bond your company?
No, I don't, I think this is just.
This is no different than going to your neighbor's house.
It's like a lemonade stand, yeah. Comes from Kebawattan.
So I, I like the concept, I do. Coming from my line of work, I'm not trying to, like, create a big deal about this, but is there any safety, like, protection? Like, do you put out traffic codes? Like, some streets, I see it's not a problem. But like, you come on Edsel, and I can see, you know, people fly on Edsel. It's like a racetrack. But, you know, do you put out, like, a traffic cone? Do you wear a safety vest? You know, I'm seriously looking for your well-being. So, is, you know, Mayor, I think that should also be part of the.
Yeah.
Kind of negotiating considerations there.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's a good flag, for sure. Did you have anything else?
That, that's, I mean, I was also going to ask, what do they do in other communities?
Yeah.
But it doesn't sound like.
No, but it's just kind of a.
A wink and a nod, so, okay.
Councilwoman Bonk Crooks?
Well, I think Mr. Ackerman is actually correct. In, in years past, we denied these kind of requests for individuals to do this coming door-to-door. There's got to be some type of an ordinance for it, and there was a big liability question with the other attorney we had before, Mr. Ackerman, and that's why I think you're questioning it, because there is some, you know, definitely could be some, you know, ramifications from this. And historically, we've said if we were going to do it, we'd give it to the, like, the football team or somebody nonprofit that, you know, that works in the city, that does, you know, charity work or whatever. But it's been denied in the past many times, because we've had just willy-nilly different companies coming in, you know, three or four different people and wanting to do this, and we've always denied it. So if, you know, you encompass some criteria or whatever, I mean, I'm all for, you know, this gentleman making some money and, you know, doing it, but it's got to be done correctly and, and try to figure out who's, who's able to do it.
I'm going to find out what other cities are doing, because I got a feeling that if he's just, he should just, he can go do it if we don't give him any credit, credibility, it's, he does it on his own, it's his risk, and we're not involved, no one's ticketing him. I'm confused as to why he's here.
Because he's trying to do the right thing.
Sean, this, my mother would call that a shonda, that is shame.
Well, it's city property, Mr. Ackerman, that's what the point was before, is that it is on city property. And in order to.
That's the problem.
Paint something on city property, you would have to have city approval, I would think.
Yeah, like, if I was just going to, like, mow grass or something, then I definitely wouldn't, like, ask for approval, I guess, but since it was, like, your property, that's the reason I asked.
Is it city property or city easement?
Easement, yeah.
Did you have anything else, Councilwoman?
No, I just wanted, you know, I just remember from the past, because we've, probably 20 groups come and want to do this.
Yeah. Councilman Benedetti?
So, yeah, Timmer makes a good point, but the thing is, we haven't seen groups like that in 25 years. So they quit doing those things. It is, like Scott brought up, there are some places around here that, you know, Edsel's kind of wide, so maybe he'd be good, but you turn right off of Ford Street onto Canterbury, he's going to get clipped, if he's out in front of my house, I can guarantee you that, if he's there when somebody comes down that corner, because you're coming off the roadway at 55 miles an hour. But, yeah, so, I mean, that's the thing that concerns me the most, is that you have to figure out how to get it so someone sees you when you're there, park your car somehow, do something. The other thing is, is that just so residents know, you're from Trenton, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, just so residents know, you're a Trenton kid trying to do something, like Nelson said, you're trying to make a buck, you're trying to start something. Because who knows? You do it here, and next thing you know, you could be doing it everywhere and turning it into a business hiring 20 kids. So I applaud you for it, because you look like maybe 20, maybe. There you go, good guess. So you're trying, and I appreciate that. So, yeah, I think we need to let Mr. Ackerman and Anthony look at it and come back to us just long as we're not responsible for anything.
Go ahead, suggest it, please.
So if it makes sense to you on his, okay, well, someone would have to make the motion for it, but if we could just get a motion to refer this to our legal counsel for review, and then we'll have Alan work with, let's get it made sure.
May I make a motion, we send this to Mr. Ackerman and Mr. Anthony?
All right, moved and supported. Send this over to our legal counsel. Any further discussion? Councilman Prueji?
Do we have any kind of idea how long this will take? Because, you know, the young man, he doesn't want to be middle of December doing this.
Hopefully in a couple days.
Or less.
Yeah, or less. So if you're okay with hanging out here for a little bit, we'll have you talk to the attorney after the fact, and we'll get the i's dotted and t's crossed if possible here.
I'll give you a business card, I'll give you a business card and tell you to call me, but I don't, I've never given out since Coleman Young said I handed them out at public meetings.
Okay, so.
Been gone 30 years?
Moved and supported to refer this to legal counsel, and then Kayden, yeah, if you could hang out for a little bit after the meeting, and then we'll connect you two guys and get it figured out, so. All right, thank you all there. Moving along now. First item under department heads and officials, we've got from our city administrator, our Benzinski and Co. engagement letter.
Thank you, Mayor. Before council, you have the Benzinski engagement letter. I'm asking you to give me the authority to get the ball rolling here, get the sign and engage them. We have used them in the past. You can see on page four, four of your backup information, what we're looking at cost-wise and everything that we're going to spend for the issuance of the, of the bonds. And so I'm asking you to approve the attached engagement letter and authorize city administrators to sign on the city's behalf.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. All right, next up, from our assessor, Ms. Barnett, our NERMAP annual subscription renewal.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here tonight to ask for your approval to renew the NERMAP annual subscription in the amount of $6,040. The funds are budgeted in the assessor's software account, 101-257-934.002.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Prueji?
Yes, just so the public can know, what, what is it that this software does?
Sure, so this is the third year the city has approved the use of NERMAP. It is an aerial overview that has fly, three flyovers a year to help us review properties. It's accessible to all city employees, so the DPS, police, fire, building department all have use of it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joni. Next up, from our controller, Ms. Cooper, very good news here, acceptance of the MI Local Retirement Grant.
Yes, good evening. So the city was notified back in June that it qualified for the Local Unit Municipal Retirement Pension and Healthcare Benefit Premium Payment Grant. This grant was created to help provide relief to the local units of government with the most significant burden from qualified pension and retirement health system benefits, benefit systems on their annual budget and revenues. So in order to qualify, our pension and OPEB system costs had to equal more than 22% of our general fund operating revenues as of December 31st, 2021, actual very, actuarial valuation. So our total retirement cost equated to 27.13% of governmental rent revenues, which allowed us to request up to $1.281 million in funding. So sadly, we did not receive that full amount that was requested. It was based on a proration of the total pool of $35 million. So once everybody submitted for their applications, then they had to, to scale it back, let's, scale it back a little bit. So we were awarded a total of $712,790. We had the option to allocate that to our pension and OPEB or a combination of both. But seeing as it is our OPEB fund that is underfunded, that, that's where we would like to allocate the total funds to. So I'm just looking for a motion to accept the Michigan Department of Treasury's Michigan Local Retirement Grant Award Amount of $712,790 to aid in the underfunded, underfunded status.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
All right, next up, from our DDA director, Ms. Pacino, we have our Fall and Winter 2024 City Newsletter.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Today I have on the agenda the Fall and Winter 2024 City Newsletter. As you know, this year, we started the City News Newsletter based on the feedback, especially from residents who are unable to access online information. It was deemed to be beneficial to continue this on a biannual timeline. So of course, we did the summer one, this one will be the fall and winter for events going from late October all the way to March. It was decided to use Printwell again, as they had the best quality and best price, the same specifications as last time, eight pages, gloss paper. The only difference is there'll be 1,000 more copies, so there's a slight price increase, and this was just an updated mailing list. So the cost to print would be $2,537.43, and the postage comes to about $2,058.99. Postage went up because the US Post increased their postage, so. Newsletters will go out on October 24th, and just kind of a brief outline, there'll be a letter from the mayor, city contacts, a recap of our art festival, Parks and Rec events, library events, election information, winner advisory tips, and a city news event calendar, just listing all the city-sponsored events that are coming up for the fall and winter.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joni. All right, next up, Dean, I'll have you take this one here, an item from our city engineer, an Open Fiber Michigan LLC Metro Act Permit Application.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you have the information concerning the Metro Act Permit Application submitted by Open Fiber Michigan LLC, this is, this started at the state level and it's worked our way down. Our engineer and DPS and building department actually met with them already to make sure they're going to be in full compliance with all of our requirements as far as work and restoration and notification. And I'm asking you to approve this and also, I guess, receive and place it on files.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. All right, next up, from our city librarian, Ms. Jensen, approval to accept the Library of Michigan's LSTA federally funded grant for improving access to information.
I'm very excited to say that we are the recipients of a $23,000, $23,736 grant,[1723.83] um, which is directed towards, um, homebound delivery and the, um, improving of information, access to information. And this is a federal grant that is being, um, passed through the Library of Michigan. And so I would just like a motion to accept, uh, be able to accept the grant today.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Dana. All right, from our HR Director, Ms. Perry, a memorandum of understanding between the City of Trenton and the Technical Professional and Office Workers Association of Michigan.
Thank you. So before you is a MOU, memo, memo of understanding between the city and the TPOM, which represents our DPW as well as our clerical personnel. Um, this MOU expands the benefits provided in the current collective bargaining agreement specifically concerning leave for Armed Forces Reserve and National Guard training. So under this MOU, full-time employees will be made whole in terms of base pay for up to thirty days in any calendar year while attending mandatory military training.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you very much, and if I could just give a quick thank you to Holly at DPS, who's our office manager, who really championed this MOU, even though she herself is a non-union employee. And I mention it tonight because I think it's important to recognize her, as she's someone that really fosters a supportive work environment that I really appreciate being a part of, so, thank you very much.
Thank you for that, we appreciate it. Alrighty, next, uh, from our wastewater treatment plant superintendent, Ms. Willison, we have approval for the purchase of new windows for the service buildings, superintendent's office, and foreman's office.
Thank you, Mayor. I am asking for a council's approval to purchase new windows at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, I'm looking to replace windows in three different locations, which is a total of, of seven windows in total. The windows that I'm looking to replace are anywhere from twenty-five to forty years old. Obviously, they have broken seals, they're fogged up, they're not energy efficient. I have enclosed three quotes, um, in the packet. After reviewing them, I'm requesting your approval to purchase new windows from Lee's Glass in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Um, I feel this price is competitive with the others, but their customer service and the people we talked to stood out compared to the other companies. Also, the, um, these windows are available in about two to three weeks, which we hope to get in before the weather turns. This would come out of the bait, the Building Maintenance Fund, so therefore, I'm asking your approval.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
All right, looks like we have one late communication, uh, Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind taking this, from the Trenton Hockey Association, their annual decal sale.
Thank you. The Trenton Hockey Association is asking for permission to go door-to-door for their annual hockey decal sale. This would be on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, between the hours of ten AM and four PM, and this would be under the direction of the Police Department.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Councilman Cabo Watten?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't even see it on late communications, so I think it came like, like, super late.
A couple minutes before the meeting, so, if you refresh it, it'll be
Oh, well, okay, I just wanted to make sure it shows up for the general public.
Yeah, yeah, I've got it on my screen, actually, so, yeah, it's, if you do the refresh, it should be up there. Did you have anything else, Councilman?
No, that's it, sorry.
Uh, any further discussion, seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you all. Um, and now I will go to our Mayor Protem, Councilman Benedetti, for our dispersments and statements, and then our reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the authorized dispersments to September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of four million ninety thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirteen cents.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Received and placed on file the following monthly reports, the financial summary, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, scheduled investment and cash on hand, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, city beautiful commission, commission minutes, August seventh, twenty twenty-four, civic commission minutes, June third, twenty twenty-four, historical commission minutes, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, traffic safety commission minutes, June fifth, twenty twenty-four, fire department monthly report, August twenty twenty-four, and the police department monthly report, August twenty twenty-four.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilman.
Sure.
All right, a couple things on my end, um, just for other council business here, too, want to give a, uh, welcome back and congratulations to Chief Hawkins, uh, graduating from the FBI National Academy, so we're all, uh, certainly very, very proud of, uh, your work there. Um, Deputy Chief Nice did a great job, uh, while you were gone, um, so we're certainly in good hands, but definitely good to have you back, and congratulations again, Mike. Uh, additionally, we had the, uh, the art festival over the weekend, um, I was down there for a bit on Saturday. I, uh, I did get to see some of the news clips from Friday, though, so hope, uh, a lot of people had the chance to go check that out, and now the murals are permanent, um, so please, if you haven't seen them, you didn't miss anything, they will be there for a very long time, um, so please head downtown to check that out. Um, got, I was out there for a bit Saturday, um, and tons of residents were super happy, I talked to a few of the business owners, too. Um, and it was one, one of those things, definitely, that, uh, certainly brought a lot of people together, so I have to thank Michelle Tangway, um, Angelia, our DDA, um, and a whole host of people who helped make this happen. Um, because it, yeah, I think brought, uh, brought some great things to Trenton that really far surpassed my, uh, expectations on what it was gonna look like. Um, and last but certainly not least, too, um, they might be pretty close to wrapping up by now, um, but I know it was, uh, senior night for the, uh, boy soccer team at the Trenton High School, um, so want to give them a shout-out, um, for their game here, um, at home, and, uh, hope that, uh, they were able to pull it out, um, and many more, uh, good stories from them to come, so, uh, wishing them the best of luck on that. Um, other than that, I am all set for the evening, um, and first up, we have, uh, Councilwoman Hornbeck.
No, like, two-thirds of my items you mentioned, so I also wanted to, um, just talk about the art festival for another minute. It was a great success. I was there on Friday for the, uh, sculpture unveilings, Tim Southward. Um, they're gorgeous, they're right in the corners of Saint Joseph's, right, Saint Joseph's and, uh, West Jefferson, there's two of them, kinda kitty-corner from each other. Um, in addition to the seven murals on the outside and one on the inside of a, uh, business. Um, Michelle Tangway was our art director, and hopefully we can have her back in the future to do more, uh, public art in Trenton. I, it was really exciting to see the city so, so busy, both, uh, Friday night and I took my kids on Saturday. We spent about four hours downtown just shopping and looking at all the murals and seeing all the people that were down there. Roundhouse was full when we had lunch there, so, and that was in the middle of the day, it was great. I also, I did get a chance to stop by the soccer senior night on, on my way to the meeting today. Um, and they had, they have a lot of seniors, uh, that will be graduating this year, and just want to congratulate them on all their hard work. I have several of those students in class, actually. And last, and certainly not least, tomorrow is my middle son's birthday, so happy birthday, Robert. He's gonna be nine years old tomorrow, and that's all I have.
Nice, happy birthday, Robert. All right, uh, Councilman Perugia?
Yes, uh, welcome back, Chief. Congrats, proud of you. Um, I, I presented to the DPW today some safety issues, and they were well-received and acted upon very quickly, and I appreciate that, Kevin. Thank you very much, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cabo Watten?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, first of all, I want to congratulate all the, uh, the recipients of the beautification awards, uh, congratulations. I say it several times a year, but I can't thank the group enough that takes care of the cultural center. Um, being across the street from it, they always make it just wonderful, it's a great, it's a great, truly, an asset for the city, so thank you to everyone, including the folks at the cultural center. Also, uh, Chief, congratulations, job well done, and, uh, that is truly a, um, an esteemed war, or an esteemed course to go through, so it's, uh, it's really prestigious that you're, you know, a graduate of that class now, and, uh, and again, congratulations, so. And also, you know, I'd like to echo some of the remarks that are made about the art festival downtown over the weekend. Um, I mean, just such a great event, and, uh, I actually knew one of the artists that was working there, or that was, uh, selling some of his, uh, art there, and he was just so excited to be here in Trenton, he's like, this is so big, he's like, you don't know what we have. He's like, this is a, a big, big deal, and he was super excited to be there. He, uh, he sold several pieces on Friday night, and I haven't seen him since, but, uh, I'm, I'm sure he probably did pretty well on Saturday as well, and the murals are, um, spectacular. They're just really, really well done, so, um, that was a great event, look forward to, to more good things happening, uh, throughout the city. Other than that, that's all I have tonight.
Right, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
I would just like to say thank you to all the artists. They did such a wonderful job. We had so much fun Friday evening walking around, and it was the atmosphere, the enthusiasm, the excitement, and walking into all the stores and seeing all the artwork hung up in, in the businesses, it was just amazing. And it was so much fun, and I, I can't wait for us to do that again. Um, I'd like to say congratulations to the chief and welcome back, we're very proud of you. And also congratulations to all of the winners this evening who received an award, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Bonkrooks?
I don't know if this, uh, microphone is working or not, I kinda doubt it, if you can hear me.
I can hear you, but I don't know if the mic's on, yeah.
Okay, well, I'd like to echo all that everybody else has said, um, that, uh, I was so worried about these murals when they proposed this idea, and I gotta tell you, I think they did a fantastic job, and I'm really proud of the DDA for instituting this, bringing it to the council, and the council approved the expenditure, and I'm really proud of these murals. I think it just kinda softened up the downtown and, uh, gave everybody something to look forward to that we, you know, we didn't know what to expect. So, yeah, it was wonderful, you guys all did a great job, the artists did a great job. Um, I, if you saw me stalking you on Saturday and Sunday, I drove around about four hundred times. So, I saw a black car going around and around in circles, it wasn't me and I had nothing to drink. But, uh, no, it was, it was a wonderful weekend for everybody. I broke my foot, so that's why I'm sitting up here. And, uh, so I couldn't get out and walk around, but I did it about, like I said, four hundred times driving around. It was wonderful, and, uh, that being said, I'd like to also say congratulations to Chief Hawkins. Trenton's really proud of you, and, uh, you know, you always make us proud, so I'm not surprised. Um, that was great, everything, you know, the weekend, everything in the city's going great, and I'm just proud to, proud to say we're all from Trenton after the weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Benedetti?
Really, did you guys leave anything?
Nope.
So, uh, first off, Mike, congratulations. I think we all need to tell you that individually, and I'm sure the guy sitting to your left is probably really happy you're back, and, uh, he'll put your chair back. So, you know, because he didn't want him conforming to yours, he brought his own. So, but no, congratulations, because I, I work for a man that's gone to that class, and it, to watch him and talk about it and everything, that is something that, uh, he really took pride in his whole life. You know, he came from the state police, but he went to FBI Academy, and to this day, he still goes up to Mackinac every year for the convention and does everything. That is something that they should be very proud of. Um, so, congratulations, and I'm sure your family's very proud of you, too. Uh, update, about ten minutes ago, Trenton's winning one-nothing. But they had like twenty-five minutes left in the game, so we'll see where it goes, but, you know, I want to reach out to, you know, Mandy, if she watches this, and thank her for that. I mean, it is nice to see the parents of these kids reach out to us and remind us that there are other sports, you know, my, my kid doesn't play soccer, my oldest one did, but I think it's good that these parents remind us, and we do try to get there and at least see them and let them know that we do support them. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilman, and, yeah, just to follow up on that, too, right, for anyone watching, that if there are, uh, you know, big events, things like that, send us an invitation, that, uh, it's oftentimes, it's just, uh, we're not there for any other reason than we may not know, but, uh, it never hurts to ask, and generally, there's always at least one of us that can make it to show support, so. Um, definitely, please send us anything like that, that's for sure. Um, we'll go to our other elected officials now, uh, Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us?
I'll just mention that the next regular council meeting will be on Monday, October seventh, at seven PM.
All right, thank you. Madam Assessor, do you have anything? All right, Mr. Treasure's mic here, oh, there is, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna skip, uh, doing it, but there's a couple comments I'd really like to make. Uh, anyways, greetings, uh, wanted to thank you, uh, Mike, for representing the city of Trenton. You did a great job, I'm sure, saw the, followed the, the Facebook posts, uh, thank you for updating us. Uh, second of all, I just want to express on behalf of my wife, uh, who was down here looking at the murals and so, they're spectacular. As a former art teacher, she, uh, I think she has a, a level of appreciation that I don't have. Uh, sometimes I look at that stuff as being frou-frou, but I'm gonna tell you, that was money well spent, and I was here at five-thirty on Friday night writing that last check, at least I think it's the last check for it. Uh, but it was money well spent, I'm telling you, it's money well spent, and Cherry made the comment, I wish the city beautiful committee, uh, commission were here, the baskets of flowers, how nice it looked, uh, driving down the main thoroughfare on, uh, on Saturday night. At least, she made a comment and said it was great. The other thing, and this, this basically happened, I want to recognize the council, administration, and mayor, uh, for an act, a resolution that you've guys made about a year and a half ago, it was, uh, April twenty-third. And that was a resolution, uh, putting in, that was pretty much required, but, uh, several communities did that as well, uh, to apply for the relief grant program. And, uh, and, and it was, and in the amount, it's seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars, as Jill had mentioned. And that is money that we might not have gotten had you not been proactive. And I think it's a good thing that we, uh, we, we were involved in, obviously involved in that. And of course, on the, uh, the fact that the OPEB portion of the healthcare is underfunded, this will help bring it back up into, uh, a very reasonable area, and, and appreciate it. I wanted to thank you for doing that. Sometimes you, you shake your head and wonder, well, what the heck happened with that? A year and a half later, we got the money, so, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mike, we appreciate that. And we certainly appreciate seven hundred and some thousand dollars in grants, so, I'll take that. Uh, any of our department heads have anything for us? All right, Chief Hawkins?
Hi, uh, Mayor, Council, thank you. First off, I wanted to say, uh, thank everyone here for allowing me to participate in the FBI National Academy. It was the greatest law enforcement experience of my life, and I will never forget that. Ten weeks, uh, my wife may forget that it was gone ten weeks, but I couldn't have it done without the support of you, but especially, uh, my Deputy Chief, Jeff Nice, who, uh, was extremely comfortable, uh, leaving the reins and told him not to call me, and he didn't, and handled everything on his own. It's one of those things where you can't, you have to immerse yourself in the whole experience there, and he did an outstanding job, so I want to thank him publicly, and the men and women of, of the Police Department. Uh, and I, I'm putting something together to show people exactly what it was, and, and I'll have that at a later date for you. But, uh, more importantly, homecoming football game, Friday, September twenty-seventh, just want to let people know that there will be a road closure for the parade, six PM on Friday, the twenty-seventh, West Road, Edsel, in Westfield, just for a short half hour, uh, on Friday, the twenty-seventh. We don't have a meeting before then, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. All right, any other department heads? Nope, we'll go to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please begin with your name and address, uh, please direct all questions through me, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Put anyone in person first, then those on Zoom. Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Moved and supported for adjournment at seven fifty-two PM. See you all soon.